Okay. Um, Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Chin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Strasburg?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Kimko?
Here.
Chair Sizer?
Yeah.
Chair Buckbinder?
Here. Thank you. By way of introduction, my name is Adam Buckbinder. I am the Chair of Planning Commission. Uh, so let's start with the minutes. Um. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections?
Thank you. Um, when I told my soccer buddies that I chaired the last meeting as acting chair, they said, you mean so far? I said, no, chair. So I used my great communicator, my negotiation skill and settled on a love seat. Can we make a correction acting? Never mind.
Do I have a motion for approval? I'll move approval of the next 23 minutes and a second?
Second.
Uh, vote please.
Commissioner Fields?
Wasn't here abstain.
Commissioner Chin?
Yeah.
Mike? Commissioner Strasburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Commissioner Kimko?
Aye.
Chair Sizer?
I abstain. I wasn't here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Likewise, was not here abstain.
Director Reese, would you have any communications, agenda modifications or postponements to notify the commission of? Yes. Good evening, Chair Buckbinder. On communications, we have received a memo from an attorney representing the applicant on item four. That was distributed to the commission. Make sure you have that. Uh, I have no other communications or agenda modifications. Thank you. All right. Uh. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Uh, opening the public hearing, would anyone like to speak? This is for anything not on the agenda. Anyone online? Closing the public hearing? So before we start the regular agenda items, um, because we have a lot of people here, the basic format is that the applicant gets five minutes to make their presentation. Members of the public can spend two minutes each and the applicant will get three minutes to close if they want that. Uh, so before we start on the items, commissioners, do we have any disclosures?
Uh, yes, I, I, uh, I visited all the sites. Uh, although I did not speak to anybody at the sites. Same with me?
Uh. I, I went past the site. Uh, I believe it's the second item we're here. Or, or yeah, the second public hearing. Just passed it. I didn't go in.
Anyone on this side? Uh, I spoke with the applicant for item number four, uh, the tech park, and I walked by it and visited the site a lot. Uh, it's near where I live. Not that near though. All right, uh, with that, let's begin with item number one. Uh, PLN, sorry, item number two, PLN 2022-110535 West Hacienda. Uh, this public hearing to do the occupation by Alex Ross of Pillars Architecture for a site and architectural review permit to allow for material changes to existing balconies and to upgrade existing trash enclosures on a multifamily residential property located at 535 West Hacienda Avenue in the R3 zone. And the planner is? Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Tracy Tam, Associate Planner, presenting on this item tonight. And so the project before you is located at 535 West Hacienda Avenue. It is located in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. And the zoning is R3 for multiple family residential and the general plan destination is high density residential, which allows 21 to 27 dwelling units to the gross acre. Just some background in the site, um, this was approved, the, there was a zoning clearance that was issued and approved in 1968 by the city council. Um, there was some balcony repair work in 2008. It came in as a building permits. Those ministerials really just like for like materials. At the time, there was some rot identified in the buildings and so less than a handful of balconies, um, were replaced at that time. Um, so largely the site has been unchanged since the initial development back in, um, around 68. Uh, the project before you tonight is a site and architectural review permit, um, to allow for an exterior change in materials for the existing balconies and to upgrade, um, existing trash enclosures. There's a total of 201 balconies and seven traction closures on site. There's only, one note is that there's only 198 units, but there are 201 balconies. Some of the balconies serve other common uses. Uh, so talk to you so, to talk through some of the proposals. So the image you see at the top of the screen is what is exists today. Um, there's a picture in there also, so drawing the picture that you see on the bottom is what is being proposed. So presently, the balconies are currently faced with a stucco finish and wood, um, wood railings to enclose the balcony. You also notice that there is a blue canvas awning at the top of the roof, um, with an underlying framing material that kind of holds the canopy in place. The applicant is proposing to sort of modernize the building to upgrade the appearance. And so what they're proposing is to remove the balconies and to have a prefabricated balcony system. So it's actually constructed in a warehouse offsite brought to the site for easy installation. The concept here is that it's going to provide minimal impacts to the residents. Um, so the length of construction is not going to be terribly too long. And the kind of materials that this, um, manufactured balcony system is comprised of is perforative metal panels with a wood plank wall as a horizontal wood siding. Um, you also notice that the roof line with the canopy and the underlying framing being removed, the roof line will also be streamlined a little bit as well. They're carrying the horizontal wood material up to the roof line just to create some, um, cohesion. The fence that you see on the ground floor units will remain, um, they're existing now. They will remain, but they will be painted sort of a bronzy, um, brown color. So the overall building can be cohesive. One thing to also note is that the walls that are within the confines of the balcony, the walls of the building that are in, uh, in the confines of the balcony are also being proposed to change as well. Currently, it's a stucco, uh, wall painted a white color, but they are proposing to put a dark metal panel, um, in a bronze finish. And the idea here is to create cohesion with the balcony, the material for the balcony. So it looks cohesive. Uh, similarly, existing seven existing traction closures are also proposed to be upgraded. And this is, uh, per city requirements. If you are doing a replace of the building, you are required to upgrade, um, your traction closures. And so the applicant is complying. With the traction closure upgrades, the traction closures will be draining to sanitary sewer, uh, which they do not currently. And they will have a root structure. So that will prevent any kind of rainwater from seeping into the trash enclosure. And if some does end up in there, it'll be drained to sanitary sewer to keep it nice and clean. At the proposed material, the trash enclosures, um, is intended to match the balcony work that they're doing, just so the overall site, uh, with, uh, not 198 units will look cohesive. They are intending to increase all balconies and change all the existing traction closures. With that, um, staff does recommend the planning permission to take the following action to adopt a resolution to allow for these changes and to find the project exempt under CECL. Next, that's presentation. Care for any questions?
Thank you very much. Uh, for staff questions, let's start on this side.
Uh, no, it was very thorough. No questions on this one?
No questions.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say that it did come up with our site and architecture review committee, uh, two weeks ago and we had a little discussion and no, no issues. Commissioner Kimko?
Uh, Commissioner, um, uh, I do have a question. Is the depth of the balconies the same as the existing? Are they losing or are they gaining? Um, balcony space, like the residence?
Uh, well, this staff did look into this to make sure the private open space wasn't going to be decreased with the change of the balcony and we didn't find the, the square footage of each balcony will remain the same.
Okay, perfect. And then, uh, as far as the support for the balconies, you know, since this is a three-story building, the top two stories are getting the balconies. Is the support going to be down on the lower units, um, I guess, private open space?
Correct. So, um, in the plan set, it does show the support system. So currently the balconies are cantilevered.
Right.
Which is not necessarily the, the safest, especially if there, um, there was dry rot found in the balconies. What is being proposed with this system and applicant to speak to more to this as well, um, is that there will be a, a, I don't know, I think it's a steel beam that will carry to the first floor for actual column. And that will be enclosed in concrete. So it'll be elevated. The steel beam is not going to, um, make its way all the way. At least um, there will be a concrete post that'll, that'll support it as well to provide additional support for, or really the support for the balconies on the upper two floors.
Okay, thank you.
Um, first of all, on, on the, what you just mentioned, the, um, the first four support, is that shown in the rendering?
Um, it's hard to see in the rendering because there is the existing fence that's around it. That's sort of, um, that you can't see through the rendering, but if you head to the plan set, um, you can certainly see a section of the, the post itself.
That, that, that will be a center post is what you're saying. In between that. The.
Correct. Let me just go ahead and share my screen here. Hopefully you can see that okay, but these are the, uh.
Oh, the, the posts on the side that run up on an angle will have a, a cement base is what you're saying.
Correct.
Concrete base. Okay.
Right.
All right. Okay. Um, the, the other thing, um, you mentioned a metal panel on, on exterior wall. Um. Which is intended to create a cohesive aesthetic with the new balconies. Uh, where is that metal panel? Is that, is that on the, on the sides of the buildings?
No, it's actually just within the balcony themselves. Let me just have it on the screen here. For ease. So the area highlighted here and I highlighted just to bring attention to it. But just where the yellow part is, it's not actually going to be yellow.
Be bronze.
Yeah, bronze color, but just to highlight where.
Okay.
The exterior, uh, material will be changed.
Okay. Okay. And, and, um. Another detail is that in the rendering, in the, in the rendering, uh, that shows the, um, the new look in the, in between the balconies. Can we go back to that rendering?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the, the other one. The other picture. Yeah. Okay. So the one on the, uh, at the bottom, you, you see the gable or whatever it is in the center, uh, at the top. Looks like it's gray. Well, it's not, it's not gray now. It's, it's the off-white of the building. And so there's no mention of you, of them painting that, that, those pieces there, yet it's shown in the rendering. Do we know whether or not that's going to be changed or not?
Correct. They are, they're proposing to paint that.
Okay. Is it going to be more of a, is it going to match the fence or is it going to look more like the gray that it shows on the render? Do you know?
Uh, for the plans, I believe it's, um, going to be matching more of the balcony, the, the dark bronze material as opposed to the fence material.
Okay. All right. All right. So it'd be more like gray. Okay. I, I just want to know because there was no mention of that in the in, in agenda as far as I could tell. I mean, maybe in the drawings it was. Um. The other thing is, is that there's a safety issue here, right? Is a dry rot. So, uh, is there an immediate safety problem? I mean, uh, is, has the city taken a look at this to see, uh, how serious of a safety problem is? Are we on a timeline here to, I, you know? And you read about, you know, balconies fall. Okay. So, so, um, uh, I, I was concerned about whether or not, uh, how unsafe this is at the moment. And, and how long, and then how long is this whole thing going to take?
Um, those questions, I would actually defer to the applicant.
All right. Okay. One other question. I, I also noticed ones on the property that, uh, there are stairwells uh, as well on this property. And I'm not exactly sure how they're constructed. Uh, but, uh, is there any concern, concern, uh, is there any, this, we know there's any concern about the stairwells being safe or having dry rot and whether that's a problem?
Um, the applicant hadn't mentioned anything. I know they have conducted their own separate inspection, um, just to take a look at the balconies. Um, I don't know if that extended further to the stairwells.
Okay. Maybe they can answer that. Um. I think that's, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Uh, the only question I have is, to be clear, um, the discretionary portion is the reason it's coming for the planning commission is the aesthetics of it?
Correct. A site and arc review is required when, um, the project is changing the exterior of the buildings in a more significant way. And because all the balconies are being replaced at this time, it is in front of the commission for review.
Okay. Thank you. If there's any questions, we'll move on to the public hearing, uh, open the public hearing. And would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant here? Welcome. Please introduce yourself and, uh, you have five minutes.
Okay. Ah, thank you. Okay. Much better. My name is Alex Ross. I'm the project architect on the project. The owner, one of the owners is here, Brian Avery as well. Um, Tracy's done a great job interpreting this, so I can just add a little bit, maybe answer some of your questions. Um, some things I wanted to note was, a, as we noted, the balconies were cantilevered. Um, and we did go out there and investigate these. And this came across because of California, state of California had the bill that came across, uh, SB 721. So because of what happened up in Berkeley. So we're going through investigating all the balconies and we determined that there was enough dry rot in there that we're concerned that we don't know how many is in. So we want to replace them. The design we came up with was partly in order to not have the tenants have to move out, not completely disturb the tenants. So we wanted to do something we could put onto the front of the building. So hence, we did the angled uh, columns that takes up less room down below. These can actually be prefabricated and then we can come back out and clip them on. We fill the metal panels between. So when we pull the stucco off to do the waterproofing and attach the balconies, we don't have to worry about stucco or anything. It's much easier application for waterproofing to put those back onto the structure. Um. We don't, we know we've investigated them all. We're concerned about it. The bill has a timeline on it where we need to get involved in this and get this thing moving. So we're concerned to get it moving. Um. This is not the least expensive approach that we're going with, but our hope is it's the least, um. It affects the tenants the least. We don't have to go into the buildings and tear out all the ceilings and cantilever the buildings. And so the owner is concerned with that. Uh, as far as, uh, the question goes with the staircases, they're all precast concrete steps that are on the outside of the building. We did look at those and they, they're fine. So we got lucky there. Um, with that, are there any questions I can answer?
Let's start from the side. Uh, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so, um, my, you answered most of my questions. Thank you. Um, and, uh, you know, I appreciate that you're doing the least disruptive manner to the residents, you know? I think that shows, um, great character. Um, my question was about the color. Now, I'm not the color expert here, you know, but black, isn't that going to fade quickly? And so you need much more maintenance, you know?
Well, so most of the colors you see, the darker colors are on metal. So they, they should not fade.
Okay.
The Kynar panel should be fine. I understand on the stucco, you know, yes, you're right. That can fade more with, more over time. The wood is actually synthetic wood. So it, it, it will be, it's more fire retardant, requires less maintenance, uh, so it won't fade at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, just to reiterate, reiterate my question, it sounds like you're, uh, want to move forward on this. So if, if you get approval and everything gets taken care of here and, and whatever's necessary to give the, give the green light, what's the timeframe? On this and, and um, is this, I, there's like multiple buildings, right? There's, there's like a lot of buildings.
Yes, there are a lot of buildings.
A dozen or more buildings there, right?
Yeah.
So, so are you going to do a building by building? And, and then what, what do you think the whole entire timeline is?
Uh, so we're going to go building by building. And the first building we're going to start off with is going to kind of be, I'll call it the test one because they're prefabricated. So most of this is going to be brought out. So our hope is that we can get a shift going where they start the demo on one side of the building. And by the time they demo the other side, we're tilting these things up onto the exist or craning them onto the existing building. Uh, I did hand a timeframe into Tracy. Um, uh, the, the thought is that we can have one building done every month. Um. And hopefully less, we're actually hoping for less. We're hoping that it, it, it's closer to three weeks to have the whole thing, every building, each building done. And the first builder is going to take the longest because it's the learning curve part of it. Um, we are very close to coming in for a permit. I need a couple of tweaks on the structural side of it. Just, we wanted to make sure everything was good on this. So I'm almost, I want to say we'll be into the city for a building permit within the month.
Commissioner Chi?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Uh. No questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, would any members of the public like to speak? Anyone online? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Now let's start on this side.
Uh, we've said it all, I think. Thoughtful approach for the residents. I like the colors. I think it makes that building feel a lot more modern and vibrant. Um, and I'm in favor.
I agree with Commissioner Fields.
Thank you.
I'm also in favor. It's very nice design and. I'm also in favor, it's very nice design and looking forward to the upgrade.
Yeah, nice, nice project, I think it's a good plus, so.
Thank you, uh, I'm also in favor, I think it's gonna be a great project.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm in total agreement and, uh, I look forward to, uh. Get, being able to move up forward and get this done.
I had previously been unaware of SB seven twenty-one or the twenty fifteen Berkeley balcony collapse, I'm. Glad that this was caught before it could be a disaster or a tragedy and it seems like a perfectly fine, uh, project, so I'm in favor, uh, do we have a motion?
Happy to move that the Planning Commission of Campbell grant approval of a. Of an architectural review permit, PLN twenty twenty-two dash one ten. To allow for material changes to existing balconies and to upgrade existing trash enclosures on properties located at five three five West Osceana Avenue. In the R three zoning district.
I second. Please, uh, have a vote.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Chi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Pastor Scissor?
Aye.
Chair Bupender?
Aye.
And I believe that is, sorry, is this final unless appealed to the city for within ten calendar days? Okay. That decision is final unless appealed to the city for within ten calendar days. Run item two, PLN twenty twenty-three dash forty-one, fourteen oh two Camden Avenue. This is a public hearing to consider the request of Innovative Design Architecture Inc. for property located there to allow change of use from existing personal services use. Previous spa hairstylist to a medical services clinic use plastic surgery within an existing multi-tenant commercial building. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit and planner, I'm guessing it's Laura Solomon? Go ahead.
Thank you. So the item I brought to you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow a change of use from an existing personal services use, which was originally a beauty spa. And a hairstylist to a medical services clinic, which would be a plastic surgery office. Within an existing multi-tenant commercial building. The proposed law project is located on a conforming lots, uh, developed within an existing commercial building within the general commercial zoning district. The lot was annexed into the city back in twenty thirteen. The project site is situated along Camden Avenue within a corridor, corridor of similar commercial uses. And is surrounded by low-density residential in the greater vicinity. There are currently four tenant spaces within the existing building comprised of two personal service uses and two restaurants. The proposed medical office would take over the two personal service tenant spaces and combine the floor plans to create one larger tenant space. The proposed use is a medical clinic specifically proposing a plastic surgery office. The hours of operation are proposed to be from nine AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. Procedures offered will be considered minimally invasive, which is defined by the American Society of Plastic Surgeons. As seen from the proposed floor plan, the building will provide seven exam rooms where the procedures will take place. In addition to office space, admin space and other employee break rooms. While the proposal involves minimally invasive procedures that are outpatient only. The classification of use is consistent with the zoning code definition of medical use clinic. Which applies to any use that allows medical procedures to be performed by a licensed medical professional. In this case, the applicant is proposing procedures that are classified as medical to be performed by a licensed board certified plastic surgeon. While the proposed use is medical. Based on the proposed procedures, operation hours, floor plan and floor plan. Staff can compare the proposed use to the personal service uses that previously operated at the site. Furthermore, the site will be conditioned to keep the windowed storefront clear from obstructions to maintain an inviting and attractive setting for patrons visiting the site. And while a medical office could potentially harm commercial businesses that do rely on foot traffic. As this commercial center is located on a class one arterial street, heavy foot traffic is not anticipated at this location. Finally, the project has been conditioned to require the proper disposal of any medical waste in compliance with any Department of Public Health regulations. Which should mitigate for any odor or environmental concerns. For these reasons, staff recommends the planning commission adopts a resolution approving a conditional use permit twenty twenty-three. Uh, dash forty-one. To allow a change of use from an existing personal services use to a medical service clinic use. Within an existing multi-tenant commercial building on property located at fourteen oh two Camden Avenue. This concludes my presentation, I can now take questions at this time and the applicant is online and is present for questions as well.
Okay, uh, let's start on this side.
Uh, yeah, I was just, I, I just looking now at our, our, our report, what's, we say Dicky's barbecue pit, but that, that's, is that gone or is that still there?
Uh, that is still there.
Oh, it is still there?
The other restaurant would be the Dunk Chops.
I think there was a different restaurant instead of Dicky's, wasn't there? Something, name or something?
There was a, a, a different restaurant there that had more of a, of a Latin fusion, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
That's what's there.
Oh, is that what's there now?
Okay.
The most recent approved plans were for Dicky's.
Our Dicky's, Dicky's is gone now, I guess.
It's this Latin, must be.
Yeah, 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 I thought it was something different, but anyway, which leads me to my only question, which is, uh. And, and you did cover it in your reports, but, uh, with a medical use where there might be some sort of chemicals being used right next to two food establishments, there's. There's no issues with that, that, that's perfectly kosher to have those at the same.
Correct, um, any storage or, uh, waste disposal of any, uh, medical, uh. Prescidents would be in compliance with the Department, Senate Clear Department of Environmental Health. Um, and any California Department of Public Health as well, as conditions.
I just couldn't off the top of my head remember any. Cases where there was a couple of restaurants right next to a, a, kind of a major type of. Medical facility, but if that's kosher, that's fine.
The proposed procedures are minimally invasive, so just the mostly injectables as described, so there wouldn't be any sort of open surgery.
Yeah, I know, I know, I got that, I, I don't know anything about it exactly, but it just seemed like there might be some chemicals or some kind of medical. Materials, but, I, yeah, thank you.
Um, so, uh, you mentioned you don't expect foot traffic, you know, but isn't there like a bus stop? Less, like maybe two, three hundred feet away, um.
That, that is correct, Camden Avenue is an arterial street, which is designed to accommodate, uh. Or tons of bus routes along that, uh, along that avenue, uh, but this, because of that, uh, it is arterial street, which doesn't have much. Any way of a sidewalk, so there isn't, uh, anticipated a lot of foot traffic. In the way maybe in a different commercial center, there would be such a square plaza.
Got it. And then the other question I had was, um, I mean, I just drove around it, I didn't go in or anything, but. I saw steps, you know, to get into the building, is there like a accessible route, a, you know, like a handicap access ADA? Type of access to the site?
Um, the plans were reviewed by the building official for all ADA accessibility, um, and conditioned as such to provide for that as, as needed.
Alright, thank you.
Just regarding the parking, uh. So, we determine, you're determining the parking is acceptable because it, it's, it's comparable to. The, what was there before in terms of spot, I thought we had a square footage requirement. On parking for, for, um, these kinds of, uh. Professional buildings, when we, we had one that came up, uh, in, on Baskam a few months ago and. And there's, there's a calculation for how many, how many, um. Parking spots should, there, there should be, so, uh, is, is, we use the same formula or is there a different formula?
That's correct, uh, the city of Campbell does require a minimum parking stall count at this site, it's not exempt, um. The site provides twenty-five parking stalls, which combined with the proposed medical use in the two existing restaurants. Did not fully allot for the total parking required. However, the applicant did provide that previous to annexation, there was a reciprocal parking agreement reported with the Taco Bell site to the south. Which in total between the two sites does provide enough parking for all of the uses proposed. And a copy of that reciprocal agreement is included in the staff report.
Alright, thanks. Mr. Fields?
Uh, thank you for the report, I think my only question is, is the main reason we're reviewing this kind of change because it's medical services?
That's correct, so as you can see on screen, uh, it is a medical service clinic as defined by the Campbell Municipal Code, which. Even though it's providing these minimally invasive procedures, is still required to first receive the approval of a conditional use permit prior to operation.
I guess this is sort of reminds me that B twelve shots we did a few months back and at the time. It seemed like. Like they were sort of singled out for. Consideration, so I guess this is more of a leading question, but like over time, I guess, I don't know that. We need to consider this so closely, uh. I can bring that up more in the commentary portion, but I, I, this is reminding me a lot of that, and so my clarification was. Is this because it's medical services even minimally invasive that every time anyone wants to change an office, that's why they're running into this?
Yes, that is correct, so it does fit the definition as provided by the Campbell, um, Municipal Code for a medical service clinic. Which covers any medical procedure performed by a licensed medical professional. Which is what the application is proposing to have medical procedures as defined by. Uh, the American Association of Plastic Surgeons and the licensed medical professional will be a board certified plastic surgeon.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Chi? Mr. Shesky?
I have no questions, thank you.
So, uh, just a, a nitpicky note, um. I believe. The, um, the slideshow says Tuesday to Friday, um, but the draft resolution says Monday to Friday, and you said Monday to Friday, so I'm pretty sure it's Monday to Friday.
Yes, I apologize for that.
Tuesday through Sunday?
Yeah, it, it's Monday through Friday, nine AM to seven PM.
Okay. Um, and I was gonna ask why this requires a commission lease permit, but Commissioner Fields already asked that question for me, so, uh, no further questions, thank you very much. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
The applicant is online and can speak at this time.
Can we unmute the applicant?
John, have you been unmuted?
And please give him private.
Hi, my name is John Ha. And I'm the project architect. For, uh, this clinic and also Eric Lee, the doctor is online as well. And, uh, we have read the report. And also hear all your questions. Uh, I'm more than happy to answer any question if, uh, you have. Uh, in terms of this use, actually. Is less used than the previous. Uh, I think the previous hairstylist and, um, the, um. Uh, this, I, I believe is also it's more of a salon. And I think those are more of the, uh, uh. People to come in and out than this one, this one is always by appointment. So I think that in terms of traffic is, is less traffic. And in terms of ADA access, I have reviewed the site and we will comply. Uh, full compliance and upgrade any ADAs if it need be. Uh, I think in terms of the use. Uh, I, I think a doctor can answer more detail if you have any question.
Dr. Lee, would you like to speak? Roll this into the five minutes, I think.
I am, uh, Dr. Eric Lee here, a board certified plastic surgeon, I miss, um, I've been practicing for about five years, uh, my office is on five 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 Knowles right now. So I, I, the intent of moving into this office is to, um, solidify, uh, my base here, um. Uh, expand my office so that I can. Uh, serve the needs of, uh, my patients and also provide more services. Uh, currently my office space is about thousand one hundred square foot, um, and it's just a little bit too small for what I do now, so. Um, I do surgeries at the nearby hospitals, Good Sam, uh, El Camino, O'Connor. So being in Campbell is the perfect place for me because it allows me to continue to provide those services at those hospitals. And I do, uh, private surgeries at a, a local, uh, surgery center in, uh, Campbell as well, so. Uh, this office is primarily my, uh, just my home base, overseeing patients, providing minimally invasive or non-invasive treatments. So I'm looking forward to it.
Uh, are there any questions for the, uh, for the upgrades? Mr. Chi?
Yeah, Doctor, there just one question comes to mind just in terms of the parking and it looks, looks like you got four employees, but I just wondered how many, uh. Patients you usually have onsite at any one time, is it really just one patient at one time or could you have, uh?
I typically, sure, yeah, I typically see about ten to fifteen patients a day. Uh, and everything's by appointment, so, uh, uh, an appointment is typically thirty minutes to an hour. So, uh, really there isn't, as, as suggested, there isn't as, as much foot traffic, there are no drop-in appointments. Everything is by, uh, appointment, the time, everything's, uh, slotted in, uh, based on the time it takes for me to do that appointment.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chi, Dr. Lee, I have basically the same question regarding the employees, if you have seven, um. Uh, seven exam rooms and four part-time employees. And none of them are licensed, you're the only licensed?
Oh, uh, so my employees are medical assistants or they so, serve a clerical role, um, they, so I'm the only licensed practitioner. I mean, that may change in the future, but, um. Uh, as the, the, the plan right now is to have me only as the, uh, only practitioner there, the only doctor there. And during terms of my part-time employees, um, um. We mentioned four, but, um, they will be two onsite, there are four part-time employees, so they're on different schedules, so they're not all there at the same time.
There would be two there, uh, two at a time probably.
Yeah.
Right. And if, and if you added additional, um, licensed physicians. To the practice, then, you know, I would imagine you would have additional employees.
Potentially, but that, I mean, I've been a solo practitioner for a while now, so it's, I think I, you know, it's, it's something that I'm continuing for now.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any other questions, uh, thank you very much for your time. Uh, would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Please come up and introduce yourself. Uh, please come up to the mic. Like, we can hear you, but the, uh, the people online and the reporting can't hear you from there. Please introduce yourself.
Um, my name is Susanna Friedman, I live in Campbell. Um, my question is if the doctor or some new doctor will do, uh, more invasive procedures. Would it be that you have today would cover that? Because then it could come up other questions.
Can staff answer that?
Um, the permit, the conditional use permit only, uh, covers these minimally invasive procedures. If they wanted to come in and do something that was going to require some sort of outpatient care or someone to have extended care that would require modification.
So what you're getting today would not go like that, it's specific.
It sounds like they would need to come back for a different permit to do that, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to, uh, speak on the side? Would anyone online like to speak on the side? Do you have any raised hands? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Let's start on this side.
Uh, I think it makes sense, uh, totally in favor, I guess my more broad comment is, I don't know what it takes to update the municipal code. But whenever the next time we're considering doing that, I would submit that we include medical services. I don't know if there's a way to bifurcate it about approving like a hospital versus these smaller clinics, but. I think Campbell does a great job on vacancies and I'd love us to keep doing a great job on that, so if we can help fast track these sort of small. You know, dozen person clinics in the future, I'm for that, so that's my main comment on this.
Yes, in school, I agree.
Yeah, I'm in support as well.
Alright, Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's, it is, uh, uh, it's okay, I think as a use, it is a little bit of a funky location and, uh. Definitely a parking challenge on its own, but with the agreement with Taco Bell where there is really a ton of parking there, I, I don't see any, any problems. But there is nowhere else to park, so. Hopefully that does work out for, and I can see the mutual benefit for. and I can see the mutual benefit for Taco Bell, so I think it works out pretty good.
I am in support as well.
Okay, I I I concur with Commissioner Clay, although I don't get the Taco Bell reference. I'll have to explain it to you later. So you know, I think it's 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 fine. It meets our requirements. I don't think there's any issues, you know, it's by appointment. This doctor is a is a certified surgeon, so when he does surgery, he's he's apparently associated with hospitals. So like any other surgeon, they do their surgery at at the hospital or surgical facility. So he's seeing patients and and minor minor and minor things in the office don't qualify as surgery from what I understand. So I I don't I don't see a problem with that and you know, I I think there's a little tight parking, but the the fact that he does have a there's a pre arrangement with Taco. I actually had the parking Taco Bell to see to stop and see the facilities. So I understand exactly what the what the requirement is there, but I think that will be fine, at least in the more near term.
That's this looks like a very reasonable business to have in there. It's a solo medical practice. It fits in this kind of building. I agree with Commissioner Fields and I'm gonna bring us around to that at the end of the meeting. It's a broader issue and I think that's worth talking about. That said, does someone want to make a motion?
I can do it. Let's get to the page. Like to make motion that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a change in use from an existing personal services use beauty spa and hairstylist to a medical services clinic use in an existing multi tenant commercial building on a property located in fourteen oh two Camden Avenue in the C two general zoning district and finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen three one of the California Environmental Policy Act.
Second. Please have a vote.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Vice Chair Caesar.
Aye.
Chair Bopinder.
Aye. I believe that is also final unless appealed to city clerk within ten calendar days. Congratulations. That brings us to item three.
Thank you.
Which is, let me make sure I get this right. This is PLN twenty twenty three dash seventy four, six fifty three to six ninety five Campbell Technology Parkway. This is a study session, so no one's going to be voting on anything this evening unless we do some straw polls, which we may do to clear up any open particular open questions. I'm guessing this is what a lot of folks are here for, so we'll go over the specifics of public comment when we get to that. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. If I'm wrong, if everyone is here to talk about the AB twenty nine seven map, I'll feel a little silly. But in the meantime, our planner is Daniel Prama. Please take it away.
Right, still getting used to that new mic. Just one moment. Good evening, Commission. This is a preliminary application study session to review a preliminary application that is required by the city's Oklahoma zoning code. Also file the compliance with the Housing Crisis Act, otherwise known as SB three thirty, and exercising a provision of state law known as builder's remedy for the Campbell Technology Park property. The study session is an opportunity for the commission to provide feedback to the applicant and to take public comments. So as I noted, the site is the Campbell Technology Park. This is an approximately two hundred and eighty thousand square foot four building R and D campus built around Campbell Technology Parkway adjacent to Edith Morley Park. The site was developed under a nineteen ninety seven development disposition agreement and plan development permit approved by the city council that allowed redevelopment of the former Winchester Drive and Movie Theater. The site encompasses four parcels, approximately seventeen acres. It is within the PD Plan Development Zoning District and the Research and Development General Plan Land District. The brief background of legislation we're looking at in terms of how this was submitted. So first up is the Housing Crisis Act that was originally adopted as SB three thirty and later amended by SB eight among provisions that allows some middle of a preliminary application that allows a developer to best lock in standards and set the time of the middle preliminary application. Secondly, the Housing Accountability Act includes a provision often known as builder's remedy effectively compel cities without certified housing elements to approve housing development projects that incorporate a certain level of affordability irrespective of compliance with the city's local general plan or zoning ordinance. And then last year, HCD and memorandum provided to the city of Santa Monica effectively joins two components of the law indicating that their reading of the law would allow some little of an SB three thirty pre app to effectively vest in a builder's remedy project. So the proposal here was submitted on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty three. That was the same day of the city council hearing for adoption of the new general plan and housing element. At that time, of course, the city did not have a certified housing element and was exposed to builder's remedy project. The materials were submitted and fees were paid that day prior to then HCD certification or council approval of the housing element. The proposal that's shown on the preliminary plans incorporates three hundred and thirty four townhome units inclusive of sixty seven BMR units. That satisfies the twenty percent affordable requirement to qualify as a builder's remedy project. Those units would be separate, would be built across fifty three separate buildings with units, three to eight units per building with unit sizes relatively small from seventeen hundred square feet to two thousand square feet. The overall density we're looking at, it's nineteen point three three units per gross acre. They are about one. Overall parking site is within the proximity of a half mile of the Winchester Light Rail Station in perspective of Highway seventeen. So there is a parking requirement applicable to the project. That said, the proposal does indicate provision of seven hundred and sixty four parking stalls. That is two garage stalls per unit plus ninety six surface stalls that would be guest parking. And here we have the preliminary site plan showing the developments that going around Campbell Technology Park, framing Edith Morley Park, major road, major interior roadways coming off the center of Campbell Tech and along the edges as well. You can see from the way the site is bisected, basically have two sides of the projects with which reflects all your different architectural designs. As noted in the staff report, there's some further research that needs to be done, but there is a public easement that was created for the Campbell Technology Park project that goes through the adjacent mobile home site onto Union Avenue that would provide emergency vehicle access. The exact stability of that easement for this project is yet to be formally determined by the fire department, but it did provide some initial information in the staff report. In terms of design, the preliminary concept is fairly contemporary, flat roofs, rectangular offsets and offsets slap side and circle panels and metal railing and garage door details. Irrespective of compliance with the zoning code or general plan, city can still apply objective standards that are in effect the time of the preliminary application is submitted with a builder's remedy project. That being said, however, the city had very few objective standards that would apply to this project being that it is within the planned development zoning district, which has no objective standards such as setbacks, fire ratio or lot coverage. There is an old design guidelines that would apply for low media density projects that was adopted in nineteen ninety four. However, nearly the entirety of that document is not objective. The only word, only provision that is in fact objective is requirement that the back of units that does not face public streets, which this case the project would imply since all the townhome units along the public street would effectively face the street and frame it. It's just got that requirement. And then lastly, there are some generally applicable standards that would apply, for instance, a city citywide seventy five foot height limit, which is not applicable to a townhome project. Limitations on fence height, tree preservation, screening for utilities, landscaping standards. In comparison to the newly adopted twenty four general plan, twenty forty general plan, that general plan actually created two designations for the site. Three of the properties were now designated to medium high density residential. And then one parcel was left research and development. This would have allowed for future consideration of some sort of land swap in the city to allow relocation of the city's corporation yard to this property under a different scenario. In terms of development capacity of the twenty forty general plan, those three parcels, the minimum to maximum four hundred and sixty seven units to six hundred and nineteen units. That would result in a delta compared to the preliminary application for you of one hundred and thirty three to two hundred and eighty five fewer units. In terms of next steps, the applicant has one hundred and eighty days to apply for a formal development application from the date of submission. And that would incorporate a plan development permit, which is now a junk permit type, as well as a kind of subdivision map for the new parcels. That would be reviewed by the San Arco Review Committee, would be reviewed by the planning commission and then recommendation to the city council who would have final decision. This application would require preparation minimally of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration under CEQA because the project is inconsistent with the general plan. It generally understood not to qualify for any categorical exemptions. And depending on the result of that initial initial study, the MMD, the project would potentially require preparation of an environmental impact report. And then action by the council would also need to account for the development disposition agreement which restricts redevelopment of the property into twenty twenty seven unless there's renegotiation with the city. And with that, I'll take any questions the commission may have.
Let's start from this side, Commissioner Gray.
Okay, Daniel. It seems like I've got a lot. Hopefully they're quickies and hopefully you can answer some of them. You know, the five page letter that we got, the memo from the applicants, I know the applicants are going to be speaking and we'll be asking them questions as well and probably a lot of these questions are more applicable for them. But are we in agreement with this five page letter from their attorneys or are there elements of potential disagreement here or or what?
I guess I'll take that question. The biggest point of contention is the applicability of the disposition and development agreement. It is our position that it continues to be viable, continues to run until twenty twenty seven and continues and would prohibit the proposed development absent some kind of renegotiation.
Anything else?
That's the main thing. There are some minor nits that exist that arise out of the complexities of the law. I think there may have been some discussion that we could only apply objective standards to condition the project. I actually am looking that, I was looking at that right before this meeting. I'm not so sure that's the case. There's some difference between what's required under the Housing Crisis Act and what's required under the Housing Accountability Act. So it is possible that you could apply some objective or subjective criteria in conditioning the designs of the of the of the units.
I I I know what what the with the tenor, so Daniel, back to you. So with the tenor of the letter and then even with the with the applicant's original letter in our packet and then with the applicant speaking with us as we went through some of our earlier things, the applicant is obviously expecting some kind or seems to be anticipating some kind of dispute with the city or disagreement with the city. And is that because of what you've just noted that with our housing plan that we just approved? We were looking at more units, basically.
Correct. There's no doubt in their letter they have an opinion whether or not that is why.
No, I I understand. I'm sure, sure. We also had a bunch of discussions and it was very informal on the corporation yard and the possibility of possibly moving relocated corporation yard to a portion of the technology park site and and giving the technology park owners of the corporation yard site for probably for mixed use or certainly for a housing project. Did did those discussions ever take place or was that as far as you know, did we ever look into that possibility of that swap?
Robbie, you should carry the bomb director. Not yet. We do have some capacity building to put into this at this point. We're looking at hiring a housing manager for the next two months. Our first task is to project manage the entire corporation yard movement project.
And I know this is a, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but and we envisioned a part of the technology park. We envisioned the city with our housing element, our general plan. I think we envisioned keeping some of the technology park as an R and D. One of the parcels.
Correct. So the the map here is from the new general plan. So that does show the most suburbly parcel.
Was anticipated. Okay. And and was what it is there? Is there an issue with the city in terms of, I don't know how to put it, you know, simple loss revenue from this project changing from R and D to housing? Is that a is there any kind of a revenue issue there for the city? Is that going too far?
Yeah, a little outside the core corner of what you're looking at. But I'll say broadly, we looked at that, the housing element, that was a key point of the council to make sure our top sales tax generators.
Be careful that we didn't move too much of the commercial. Well, I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Interesting. My question is about the affordable housing. I understand they're proposing twenty percent of their total to be affordable housing. Can we condition that the affordable housing be built first? Because because the reason I ask is that experiences where, you know, you condition it, you approve it, and then they build the market rate and then.
I mean, realistically, the housing would need to be distributed throughout the site within each building and these townhome roads would be built as single structure. So it wouldn't really seem feasible to build a portion of the building. The city would ensure as part of the affordable housing plan that this is distributed throughout everywhere. So it would I don't see how it would be practical to construct a site without building all the.
Right. If it's if it's spread out, that makes sense. I thought maybe there might be, yeah, like there was a clustering, but who chooses which units are who would be designated as affordable, which units designated as market rate? Does the city or does the developer?
Part of the city's approval. Generally speaking, the application material includes a formal housing plan, which indicates the level of affordable units, their number, size, and then their actual distribution throughout the site and is incorporated as part of the city document.
And then and then would specific units be picked? You would say like unit three B in this building would be affordable unit?
Yeah, so every project that comes forward to commissioning council does include a map that actually identifies.
Thank you.
It's fine. So I have some questions probably going to be for the developer and then comments later, but but just a couple of questions about just to confirm, it looks to me like the the visitor, the additional parking, except for one small little lot. One tiny lot that's got a few of them, that it's mostly just on the private streets, on the curbs. It would, to me, it looks like it's going to be all curb parking is private. Is that is that correct?
Correct. These are somewhat, you know, I double points.
I understand. I understand. But trying to interpret it as best I can. So it seems to me that one of the things that you mentioned is that this is in conflict with the general plan. And I guess my question is, considering all the state laws that have come along in the last couple of years, limiting, you know, overriding and limiting some of what we can do. Are there laws that have been passed? Are there laws that um, have been passed that uh, override our general plan for um, a circumstance like this?
Well, that's exactly what you're seeing here, that the Housing Accountability Act is being exercised in a way that is overriding the general plan. Since the city failed to get a certified housing element by January thirty-first.
So uh, the um, has anybody talked about um, you know, one of my, oh, first of all, uh, these are all for sale units?
Presumably.
They mentioned rents in there, but I, I'm assuming maybe it's people buy it and then rent it out. So, so.
Yeah, I would do that. You can always map the project and there have been circumstances where developers actually retain ownership of it.
But these are all basically, with the exception of twenty percent uh, affordable, they're market rate for sale townhomes. Has, have there been any discussions about um, as part of this development? Making improvements or additions to uh, the Edith Morley Park, for example, playground? One, one of the things that, one of the things that came up. You know, you know, I wasn't around when this, I mean, I was here, but I didn't know about it when the, the the core, uh, the technology part was developed. The park was developed, I believe. And that was part of the deal, I assume. I don't know how that occurred, but it's part of redevelopment and, and so we got another, we got another city park, but it was basically for the from my personal opinion, for the benefit of, of, of the offices, uh, since it's kind of out there by itself. So I, I, I'm wondering if there's any discussions whether the developer has uh, put on the table anything in terms of providing improvements to the park, providing uh, uh, some uh, more access from neighboring uh, uh, for instance, the mobile park. There is no direct access from the mobile park, but whether or not there's been any discussions about whether or not making uh, uh, those from the mobile park have, have, have access to get to Edith Morley Park quicker than they probably do now. Um, if, if there's any discussions like that that occurred. So the only other question I have is, is I, I read the, I read the letter and think, one, one thing that struck me was that they said something to the effect of, I guess maybe they'll have to answer this question. I don't, if you don't have the answer, Daniel, is that they, they suggest that it's not feasible if we had, if they had to go to a higher density. Which seems odd to me. It's usually the other way around. So I, I guess maybe I should reserve that question for the applicant.
That's all I have for now.
Christopher Fields?
Uh, my questions have been covered already.
Thank you.
Thank you. The easement, uh, Daniel is to the north. There's also a road to the south of the development as well.
Yeah, with a public street, Campbell take out this parkway that touches on the.
But that's not actually open and lunges. It's the there's a, right at the corner, wasn't there an access road?
You're thinking of Crittich Lane.
Yes, Crittich Lane.
Yes, Crittich is a private street. And so that is not connected since it's not a public street. So it would not be properly connected at two sides to a public street.
Um, and the type of um, the easement and suitability and review by the fire department. What type of time scales and do we have any more information on how that is going?
So that would be a determination that they would make upon a formal application. You have, it's a public easement that was negotiated by the city through the mobile home park when the current developments was being processed by the city. It's just uh, the matter further understanding with the fire department. And there's also a need to clarify the physical improvements that the easement would satisfy their, their requirement, the fire department requirements in terms of the, the width of the easement, the clearance height, the roadway construction and the connectivity into the project site. And as you can see here with the preliminary site plan, there's actually no physical connection to that easement. So as it's shown now, it's not actually confined. So there's not a level of detail on the plans for the fire department to make a determination, one way or the other.
Um, and this is a, if, if we accept the applicants and their legal's arguments here, this is, this is just one potential um, plan they've submitted here. Um, what would be the constraints on what they could actually they've got this one, could they go for lower density and what, 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 what? What are the constraints on it if we, if we follow that lineup?
Under the pre-app, they are allowed to modify the unit counts and square footage upward by twenty percent. It's a little less clear if you can get below that what they're proposing.
Thank you. And did I hear you correctly on the CEQA? Because if, if this was conformant with the um, general plan, then it wouldn't be a need for CEQA or there still be a need for CEQA as well.
I mean, that's a project by project determination, but because these middle, it's not at all consistent with the general plan, it doesn't qualify for any exemption. So minimally again, there would be an initial study that would try to identify any potential environmental impacts. If this could be reasonably mitigated, then a mitigated negative declaration could be prepared. If not, then a preparation of an EIR would be required.
And uh, one that I think commissioner, as this has touched upon, uh, park fees. Would there be any new park fees here in this development?
Yes, the project would be subject to a, a fee in lieu of parkland dedication.
Thank you.
A question about the parking report or the lack thereof. So uh, in the packet, there's a map and it basically shows a radius as the growth wise. So that being within a half mile of a um, public transportation. How does it apply when looking at the map? The mo- majority of the property is closest to the bus stop that's across the freeway. So it wouldn't technically be within half, walkable half mile.
Law does not require it to be a walkable half mile.
Okay, so it's just generally written.
Realized. Yeah, and this is, and we also are having a study session on eight twenty-nine seven after this study session. You'll get more information on that one.
Thank you. Um, so I'm sorry, just to clarify, attorney Selmman, is it the city's position that the development agreement? Like without action from the city prohibits redevelopment to housing before twenty twenty-seven?
No, it does not prohibit redevelopment for housing. What it does is require compliance with the disposit, with the Central Campbell redevelopment area plan, which in fact requires that the project comply with the general plan that is in effect at the time of, of, of vesting of the project.
Okay. So that will, to go forward with this, that will have to get hashed out. Okay, um, so more broadly, uh, given that this is not a um, item to vote on, what are the questions before the commission tonight? Like what do, what are we supposed to provide direction on? To whom? Like what, what is staff looking for from us tonight?
Like with any study session, we, the mission has had several of these on housing projects. Most developers are willing to hear feedback from the mission in the public voluntarily take into account and improve their project. So this is an opportunity for you to hear comment from the public and to make your opinions heard to development team. And then that will be it.
Okay, so just for organization, uh, once we've taken public comment and stuff, we're going to do one round of everybody's comments and that should cover everything. I feel like with a project like this, we can get into a lot of discussion and that you, I don't think there's really much of point in trying to change each other's minds since we're not voting on something. All right. Thank you very much. With that, I will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant here? Come on up, please introduce yourselves. Oh, right, yes. And we do have, um, is this the only card we got? Oh, here, um. Do you call them? Do I call them? Okay, uh, please introduce yourself.
I'm Tim Pasquinelli and I own the Campbell Technology Park. Um, we're excited, pleased to present this to the city of Campbell. Uh, certainly the city of Campbell needs housing and, and we hope to help satisfy that. I won't spend a lot of time. I think that the staff did a great job at presenting uh, the project. I'll just make a few comments and then uh, leave it open to questions. Couple of things. One, um, as we stated in our memo, that we don't feel that DDA is um, at all relevant in this situation. Um, there are many other reasons not cited in that memo, but um, our council is here and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The other thing, one other thing that I'd like to point out is that, as you know, uh, three of the four parcels have been uh, included in uh, the housing element uh, at much higher density. Our project uh, is coming in at about a hundred and thirty units less than the minimum required under uh, the housing element on the remaining three parcels. Um, I don't think that the neighborhood uh, would support, nor do I think it would fit in having large apartment buildings because that's all you could build there uh, to meet these numbers. Um, one thing that I would like to also touch on is, and I've, I've mentioned this many times over the last couple of years, but um, it's obviously fallen on deaf ears. You know, the, the city in three of the four uh, housing element submissions included all four parcels. And at the very last minute, they took the fourth parcel out. Um, because they wanted the opportunity to relocate the city yard. I, I think there's a piece of that discussion that's missing, and that is, we don't want the city yard. We have zero interest in the city yard. So as much as the city may want to relocate the yard there, um, that's not something that we're open to discussing at this point. Um, at least certainly a swap for the city there, I'd say. I think I've said enough. Do you have, if you have any questions specific for me, I'm happy to answer them or design team, architecture team. The other thing I'd like to say is, uh, and it was discussed a little bit is um, the plan that you've seen is very preliminary. Um, and we are working uh, on a formal application which will be submitted. And I'm sure it's going to look very different. We're actually um, seeking input from different developers to make sure that um, we're meeting the market needs and not just um, you know, putting in what, what we think is necessary. So any questions for me? Any questions for the team?
Let's uh, start from this side, Christopher Fields.
All right, could you elaborate a little bit more on city yard, like full stop, you don't want it, like, could you just give a little?
Yeah, happy to do that. Yeah, happy to do that. Um, there are some serious environmental and development issues with city yard site. Um, huge uh, environmental issues. It's also uh, the city would like the city yard site to be one hundred percent uh, low market rate housing, affordable housing. And it's not feasible for us to develop it. I mean, it, it, what other cities have to do in those cases is to actually give the land to a, a developer who does that type of development. We're not that. And just given uh, the environmental issues and development issues, it doesn't, doesn't work.
And my second question, like the number of units you came up with and square footage, they're all like small, medium-ish for townhomes. Like why that out of all the choices you could have done?
You know, that, so it's funny, it's a great question. That's sort of what, what the market is looking for right now. I mean, that's if you, you know, look at, at what's selling. Um, the bigger stuff isn't selling. I mean, you know, four, five thousand square foot houses obviously don't fit there. Um, but that fits well with uh, what the market is, is uh, looking for right now.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Christopher Gray? Christopher Camper?
Thank you, Chair. So last time you were here, you, um, you were very candid and I appreciate that. And you said, I can't find anybody that would build that many units for me. You know, if I can find somebody. Right, you know, we're all, and I appreciate that. So um, that's probably the reason you're uh, proposing less number of units because you can't find somebody who can build it and also to sell it fast. And as uh, if you were to find somebody going forward that would be able to make the density higher, would you be open to that or have you made your decision and?
I know at this point, we're, we're, you know, full speed ahead on, on this project. Um, we're committing a lot of time, a lot of money over the next, you know, four months uh, to get this uh, submitted. Um, and so at this point, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. I mean, uh, apartment, no one's building apartments right now. And then that's just the reality of it. And I understand that other people have different opinions, but we have talked to um, many, many, many apartment developers. They are not developing apartments. They're not building them right now, and especially um, in Campbell.
Okay, thank you.
Um, costs uh, and the, the rents, interest rates, rents, you know, can't support it. So for sale product is definitely um, a, a much more uh, feasible project. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's big. And, and also construction costs are um, a lot more expensive.
So um, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna just accept your position on that. But, but I, I guess my question is about whether or not you've considered, you know, you, you mentioned something about it, it, the, the area isn't consistent with, you know, uh, putting in more. I, I don't know if you mentioned going higher, but it would seem to me actually just from my layman's point of view that you're, 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 there's a portion, the parcels that are on the western, southwestern portion that are up against uh, highway seventeen and is away from the nearest residential area, which is the mobile homes, that, that actually higher would be feasible there. So to me, it's like you, you're all, you're going three-story all, all the way through up based on, on this preliminary. It's just going to be three-story townhomes. Um, and I just don't know whether or not you've considered possibly going higher to get a little bit more density on units. Um, at least in certain portions of it, where you could squeak, where you could go um, in some way to get another fifty to seventy-five units or something.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that, great, great question. Um, to be completely honest with you, when all four parcels were included, um, at a higher density, which we had always said we need lower density. Um, we were going to, you know, we would have met the requirements and been happy to develop all four parcels and we would have had an apartment building um, that created more density. That, it's just not financially feasible. I mean, no one wants to, to, to build in their own apartments right now. And it's, it's very expensive. So yeah, I guess that's about as simple as I could.
All right. The, the, the other question I have is that you say this is very preliminary and you're, you're, you're asking developers to come in and give uh, you know, give their
Feedback?
Their, their design ideas. So, so would this change in any significant way? Would the numbers change when they sit there? So locked, fairly locked into three thirty-four? Or could it be less than three thirty-four? Could it be more than three thirty-four?
We have to stay within 20% of that 334 number, either up or down.
So in theory, you could go, you could go 60 something units less is what you're saying.
That's right.
You'd be coming back to us and saying, we're going to put in 270.
We could, absolutely.
Or you could be willing.
I could come and say, yeah, gonna do 20% more, another 65.
And, and the 20%, just, this, this probably should be back to you, Daniel. It's, it's just to clarify, 20%, low market rate is, is requirement based on, on the way they're doing this, right? Yeah, and how's it got to go? Yeah. Okay. So, so we're getting the extra 5% because of this particular circumstance.
Right.
All right. That's all I have for this.
The only question I have here is, is it possible to make these units ADU ready?
I'm sorry?
Is it possible to make these units ADU ready?
You know, it's funny, we're, that's a part of our discussion in design. And that's probably not something that I can answer, but if you want a more specific answer, I could, happy to bring up the project architect and, and she'd be happy to.
Sure.
Thank you. Jill Williams, Principal with KTG Y Group. And this was, this has been being discussed. It obviously is a very popular discussion these days of junior ADUs, ADUs. And so what we have found is even in these three story townhomes, it's very possible to integrate an ADU into that ground floor and offer that separate income generator, very popular with a lot of buyers to think that they could generate income from their new purchase. And so it is something that most likely we would be showing in the next, in the next middle, that there's at least that possibility.
So if you did this, would this mean that each of the, the standard townhomes would actually be two units? Or would it be that they would have the option to convert to two units?
So as I understand it, the junior ADU or ADU does not count as an actual unit. So we wouldn't necessarily say that it's changing the count on the site. Somebody might want to comment on that further. And most likely, we wouldn't show that every single one had that ability that would add potentially quite a few other households onto the site. But usually we come up with a certain percentage or a certain plan type that allows itself to do that so that a portion of them would happen.
Okay, just a quick question for staff. As I understand it, ADUs don't count in the density calculations, but when we file our annual progress reports towards our Rena goals, they do count as units. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
What size are we talking about for the ADUs approximately?
They are probably in the range of 350 square feet. They'd be like a efficiency apartment.
So more, so more of a studio or more of a?
Most likely a studio. Potentially, we could get a little bit more space, but they'd have their own bathroom. They'd have a, at least an efficiency kitchen.
Separate entrance.
And a separate entrance. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. With that, let's let's go to our speaker cards.
Debbie Post.
So just a reminder, everyone has two minutes to speak. Please introduce yourself when you come up.
My name is Debbie Post. I live in the El Paso Mobile Home Park that is looking to be impacted by this, this development. I've lived in San Jose most of my life since 1961. I've watched it develop and develop and develop. Campbell always had a nice, comfortable, down home feeling. And now I see, you know, it looks like Campbell wants to be a mini San Jose. This is going to greatly impact our residential living. We are all seniors. We are looking to have more high density traffic here. Downtown is already very crowded. There's a lot of traffic. There's going to be more traffic if you have more housing. So all these things need to be considered. Where you put more housing, it's, it affects everyone's life, not just the people, the potential new residents, the potential new money making possibilities. It's, it's a community. It's not, you know, Campbell community. It's not Campbell mini San Jose, or, you know, let's make the big bucks where we can. This is, this is where we live. This is where we want, you know, where people raise their children, where we bring our grandchildren. And I'm just, it, I shudder to think of what Campbell's going to turn into if they keep adding more and more housing. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, we're just here to hear your input as, as the public.
All right. Thank you.
Patricia Tinto?
Slide that shows the San Jose Palomas and the park. It was the second that the applicant had up. Next. Yeah, it kind of shows us there. I'm Patricia Tinto. I live at Ten La Paloma. That's also in Paso Dade Palomas, a mobile home community. We are a senior stock cooperative resident owned community. That means that we are a California C corporation. We have a board of directors that actually govern our living, but that we all, both our board of directors, our employees, except one, all live in the park. We have no rentals at all. It is owned. And we do pay a, we are assessed. Our houses back in 1903 were looked at as individual home, individual homes. So we are assessed just like a house on any other street in Campbell. And we pay our fair share of Campbell city tax. Some cases, actually half the tax that some of our early and older residents own. Right now, we own the property that you see outlined, including Paso Dade Palomas Lane that goes out to Union. We share one empty way that we agreed to back when the roads were being constructed with a commons, which is a large multi-unit apartment condo complex. We are concerned about being so late in this discussion. We got the hearing notice and had some questions about what builders' revenue meant and how it began with a five-year plan for Campbell. We've been very pleased to be part of Campbell and to be considered over the years. By the way, our park was built in the early 60s by the same person who built the pool yard as a kind of a forward thinking park. It became a resident owned in 1983 when Shahadi wanted to go have some other land. And that was the time that we were able to purchase it. And we do own that out right now. We pay for everything, all of our infrastructure. So we are currently in the logic of our electricity for every house from 50 amps to 100 amps. Part of our concern is the impact of this development, not only in terms of density and amount of cars and traffic.
Is that my two minutes? Yes, it is.
Is that it?
Very much. Yes. If you have a sentence or two to wrap up, go ahead.
Can I go ahead?
If you have a sentence or two, just if you can wrap it up.
Okay, anyway, I have a letter here that documents all that. We'd like to be sure that there is no impact. The infrastructure does not impact us. When the sewer line, we think goes under our road. We're also the only line for electricity when the feeds comes in along our roads. Otherwise, we're all underground. We do our own improvements. The other thing is on the border between us, the road that is contiguous to the park, there are many, many old redwoods and oak trees and other heritage trees. And we've been preserving over 74 heritage trees since 83, not since we planted before that. So we have many environmental concerns as well as the density concerns of our traffic that will put over on Union Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I hand this in to the?
Can you hand that to?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rita Arbor. I live up to San Jose Paloma. I have a couple of questions. We have 13, we live on 13 acres of land and we have 106 units. You want to put 600 units on 17 acres? What does that mean? Does that mean that you're going to have shoeboxes there? You're going to have maybe room for one person to live in each unit? I can't, I, I can't even imagine that. What about emergency vehicle access? If we have 106 on 13 units, acres, and you've got 600 on 17 acres, what does that do for the emergency exit? Or access? And also, is this board willing to take our board over and show us what they're talking about? And maybe we can fill them in on what's really going to be happening rather than seeing it on a screen? Would you be willing to do that with us? That's my main reason for being here. I would like you to take us, the board, our board over there and show us what's planned. I'd like an answer as soon as possible because this is frightening. I mean, who wants to buy something or within something 300 square feet? I can't even imagine that. And that's what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josephine Pugsley?
Good evening. My name is Josephine Pugsley. I'm also a resident of Paso Dade Palomas. We just found out about this development approximately five days ago. So I'm sure as more of us learn of it, you'll be hearing more from us. Some of my neighbors already presented some of their concerns. I would like to just present one, which I think is very important. McGlinsey, which will handle the majority of the traffic of that project, is only two lanes. It currently is filled with its parking, with the residents of the townhouses, townhouses at the beginning of McGlinsey and also the workers that are there. I don't know how it's going to support traffic from either 300 or 600 units, whatever it winds up being. So I want to know if the developers consider the walkability of that area. I take it you're going to have families in there. McGlinsey has very few sidewalks. And if you're saying they can get to public transit, how? They can't walk on that street. So this is something I think the developers have to consider and certainly hope our planning commission considers that also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Chris Coggins?
Hi, I'm Chris Coggins. I'm a Campbell resident. Thank you all for taking your time and being here. Campbell has a balanced economy of industrial, commercial and residential uses. Commercial industrial uses pay more in taxes than they cost in services. Residential uses cost the city and county more than they pay. Since our community is balanced, we would like the property to remain zone industrial. Mixing residential uses with industrial uses typically results in complaints by the new residents against the existing industrial uses. This will force some long-term Campbell businesses out. Because industrial land is relatively cheap, there's always a demand to convert it to residential use. In the long run, term, this hurts the economic balance of the city. If forced to convert to residential uses, our neighborhood, most of the people you heard, are concerned about the density and the impact on the infrastructure, which is McGlinsey and Camden. And also, I've heard you mention the easement. We're, we're very concerned about the easement. We've had to actually put up speed bumps because we're a senior community and our vulnerable residents have been at risk from speeding motorists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
That is the last notice and I do not see any hands up online.
Okay, if there's anyone here who has not spoken who would like to speak about this, please come up, introduce yourself. Come on up.
And we just, we also have someone that just raised their hand also.
Okay, we'll take comments in the room first and then online comments.
My name is Martha Puno and I also live in Paso Dade Palomas. And I have the same concerns that were already expressed, but I also have a concern about Edith Marley Park. It was a quite small park. And I don't see any other park or, or recreation land provided for the families in this particular complex. We talked about putting in a, a we call it a playground or apparatus. I don't know how many of you visit Edith Marley Park. I don't know where you would put it. And that's definitely will change the whole complex of that park. It's, right now, it's pretty quiet. The other thing is already there is not parking because the construction companies, employees park all along the border of the park. There's during the week, you can't park there until they come and leave at about 5, 5. They, they get in a van and they take them to the sites and they bring them back about 5:30. And the cars, they, they did re realot some spaces that they couldn't use all day long. But it's very impacted. And, you know, it's a shame to see that park be ruined from what it is now. And it's, anyway, but that was a problem I saw. And if you're talking ADU units, you talked about parking places. Will those people be required to give up one of their parking spots to anybody that they rent to? Because the parking could be atrocious in a, in a very short time. It's kind of, you know, iffy right now, how many parking places there's going to be. And I don't really see them on the map, but and again, like they said, we didn't even know that a dyno, that they had rezoned the technology park. So it's kind of a shock.
Thank you very much for your time. Did anyone else in the room want to comment on this? Come on up. Please introduce yourself.
I'm also part of the Paso Dade Palomas Park. And I'm going to echo what they said in some respects. So during the presentation, I saw a lot of how many houses could fit in here and provide parking for those, for those homes. What I'm not seeing is what are we going to do about the traffic? We've got, if you're going to put in 600, 400 properties, there is going to require two cars to take two incomes generally. So you're talking about adding 600 to 700 vehicles to an area that can't handle the traffic that's out there now. And that's, then the other thing is McGlinsey is, is that room's been there 100 years and it's packed right now. You can't get in off and off Union Avenue or get onto the freeway using that road in the morning. So, so that's a lot of consideration needs to be put into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in, in the room? All right, let's hear from people online.
Alicia Ammann? You can speak.
Hi, yes. My name is Alicia and I live on West Valley Drive. And I'm concerned because we already have a parking crisis. We have people that come up from Union and come and leave their cars and it's completely packed. And adding, you know, 330 more units and then you're doubling it with an ADU. I think there's just not enough parking and it's going to create an even bigger parking crisis as well as just congested traffic. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So anyone else online? Thank you very much. Is anyone else online? Okay, one last check. Anyone else in the room want to speak? Sorry? Oh, I'm terribly sorry. The applicant has three minutes to close if you'd like to. Thank you for reminding me. I really was not trying to shortchange you.
No, no, no worries. Thank you. I'll be quick, quick. First of all, thank you all for your consideration. Thank you all from the mobile home park next door. Obviously, I think, just to clarify a couple of things. The city has zoned thirteen acres for six hundred houses. We're proposing three hundred and thirty-eight on seventeen acres. Just to clarify that point. We're with you. We don't want more density. We do not want the density that the city would like. I think that the density issue you guys have all talked about, that's one reason for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. All right, so again, yeah, for a moment. Traffic. The traffic engineer determined that the project would not actually require full level service analysis because it would result in reduced traffic compared to the overall research involved in the park. And also due to its proximity to the light rail station, it is also going to be exempt from the EMT analysis. He's indicated that the city will require very focused operational analysis of the Campbell Technology and McGlinsey intersection. That will be. Okay.
Can I ask, yeah, I wanted to ask Daniel about that. Sure. Is the traffic engineer's evaluation based on recent evaluation in the last, you know, since the pandemic or during pandemic? Because, and the vacancy in the technology park has, you know, increased dramatically from what I understand in recent years and that pandemic has affected them significantly. So, so what are we, are we comparing apples with apples here?
So the delta between current entitled trips and new trips as part of the project and the over under is based on the trip generation values in the IT, the International Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Now, IT is updating their document to take into account post-COVID impacts on traffic generation. But that document will not be updated for some time. And that notwithstanding, under all the SGBR free out, the application is locked into the standards effective today at the time it's submitted. So we are looking at pre-COVID data.
Daniel, I just didn't hear you said because of the proximity to the light rail, they're exempt from what type of analysis?
Of vehicle miles, probably.
Vehicle mile, okay. And would this project require a TIA at all or no? Traffic impact analysis?
Not a comprehensive TIA. Traffic engineer will get really want to focus on the operation of that one intersection of the very limited scope.
And which intersection? McGlinsey and?
Campbell Technology Park. Okay. All right, so what's going to happen now is we're going to go and we're each going to give our thoughts on this. And I think that hopefully will get staff in the applicant everything they need. So, Mr. Field, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, one, just want to make sure public hears the concern on parking feels very real. State law AB 2097, if I'm getting it right, is the one that really restricts our ability to comment on it because of this property's location within a half mile of public transport. As we pointed out, it's across a highway, but it is as the crow flies. This is a state law. So I want to acknowledge we hear what you're saying, but this is not something we could weigh in on. I do hope the developer engages with Ceeo de Palomas. You heard everybody talking today. Education talked about the plans. The stuff about sewers or emergency access that resonated. So I hope that's something you can do. Safe travel to Edith Morley Park from across the street, sidewalks, crosswalks, whatever. That also stood out to me. And then, you know, the letter, as it indicates, says, you know, you're not subject to the recently approved, like, things like the multifamily development standards. I hope in the plan that you put together in the next one hundred and eighty days that you do look at it and elements within that plan, like, for example, solar, that you look at including those because you're going to build in Campbell and be a part of a community that by and large will follow the general plan. So understand you are in no way bound to do it, but as you look at it, as you're sort of evolving your proposal, I think that was something I would encourage. And those are my comments.
Yeah, I think it was great that the city was trying for ambitious density target because the overall problems with housing we have in California. However, I'm actually in favor of the lower density being proposed. A lot of that is on safety grounds, I think, and some of the reasons that were articulated by some of the residents here or residents of the area. You know, I know that area pretty well and it's pretty horrible for traffic, right? Accessibility, as soon as you go on to McGlinsey, you know, it's part of the sidewalk is narrow. It's often blocked because it's industrial. You can have kids out there in your large, you know, three hundred and thirty apartments, you can have kids out there. So actually, I'm in favor of a lower density. I might maybe I'll step with my fellow commissioners here, but I actually think that's a better outcome. The park is relatively small. It will be needing crossing the road, which at the moment, that traffic's, traffic report, I think is nonsense. Daniel, I think it's nonsense. I go there once a week. It's empty, right? There's hardly any traffic. There's going to be loads of traffic when it's built up there. Kids are going to be crossing the road to Edith Morley Park. So what I'd like to see in this plan is a focus on public safety. And public, well, let's start with that. I don't think it's sufficient just to look at the intersection of McGlinsey and Campbell Technology. I think that's completely inadequate. Whether we can do anything about it, I don't know. I think it's inadequate. I would like to see safety regarding the Campbell Technology Park access road there, especially from children. I think the actual development, it would be really good to have a couple of small parks actually in the development targeted at children. So rather than having the children going over to the main park, there's some play areas there, which mean they wouldn't need to need to always go to the park to play football or whatever. Even if it means reducing the density, using some of that for some open area. Because looking at those early-stage plans, you know, I know the very early stages, but it does look very much like a dormitory. And I know that the architects will be spending time in making it look a lot better. But I'd love to see some open area there rather than just relying on the park. So really, going back on that, I think public safety is an issue in multiple aspects. I think the traffic report, there's going to be lots of traffic there and people speeding. I think the accessibility from McGlinsey is going to be an issue. So that's why I think the lower density is better. And I'd love to see some thought around open space and kids' parks. Thank you.
Well, I think that, you know, you have a really incredible opportunity to make this for a large parcel. It's something really cool for a lot of families and I'm excited about this project. I was happy to hear that those plans were very preliminary and that you're going to be doing a lot of work. Because I think, you know, there's a lot that you could consider and kind of picking up on the comments around safety and families. Right now, it's kind of very straight, straight lines and all of that. But you could think about kind of making kind of community meetup-type areas. And, you know, like in Europe, you've got apartment-type places, but there's kind of a square in the middle and an access and a lot of children playing. So, you know, you could surround the units around a play area or you could make them outside of the living areas. But it's going to be a lot of people. It's going to be a lot of families. I heard you write it's about an average of seventeen hundred square feet per unit. So that's a good-sized three-bedroom, potentially a four-bedroom. So it definitely, like you said, as like a sweet spot in terms of being accessible to people. I'm not a four thousand square foot, but also not a giant apartment block either. So trying to think through how you build something that also builds community for all the people that are going to be living there, I think would be, would be very cool. And that park, I think, is an amazing place. It's open space. It's grass. It's, it has like a little creeper stream and then there's the foot ponds over there, which are also very cool. So, you know. Uh, yeah, they did recently.
I've seen it once.
And, yeah, no one's going to ask you to build the foot ponds and water, don't worry about that. But yeah, so, so safety-wise, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't know that you can really do anything related to the street and crosswalks or whatnot. But think about the connection points between the property and where kind of the logical places for people to connect from your property to the park would be. There's also a, what do you call it, the community garden over there as well, which is also a beautiful area for people to do gardening and things like that. Um, the other comment, so definitely a lot of great feedback from the community from Positive Palomas. I heard a lot of concern about the connection from that community to what you're developing. And so I don't know if there's a way to not have access along that particular road that people are really concerned about there because that is going to have a just a significant impact in terms of pass-through from that community. So, yeah, think about that. And I think that probably would alleviate a lot of the concerns, at least a good amount of them. And, you know, bike racks and that would make life better for people that are going to move in.
So just pick up, you described about creating a community there. As opposed to a series of dormitory, it just looks like cell blocks, right? I'm sorry to say that. It was just like cell blocks turning into a community. And I know you're trying to balance that with the density and being sensitive to those requirements, but that would be great. And I guess it'd add value to what we're trying to do as well in terms of reset.
The other point I was going to make is, you know, I know there's kind of this balance between developers kind of cookie cuttering versus having a variety of sizes and looks. But I think if you can try and have a range of four, five units, different square footage is, that just helps provide diversity into the community. You've got the single people in the one bedrooms. But that, that'll be a nice mix for everybody.
Okay. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, no, those are all good comments from our commissioners here. I, you know, Campbell's a better place for, you know, getting sixty-seven BMR units as proposed and three hundred and thirty-four townhomes, which are market rate, but they're townhomes. So by their nature, you know, more missing middle type of housing. You know, that's a big plus. And then the double, of course, is in the details. You know, I guess, yeah, I am, I am kind of shocked that there's not a bigger transportation study. We know that that area, that McGlinsey is crazy, you know, it just doesn't work. And I can't imagine that there's parking issues, you know, on West Valley and some of those other issues. I do know the Lofaloma Mobile Home Park, I've been in there a few times. Real nice, what a nice little island of serenity there in Campbell. But this is, of course, what we're coming up with, you know, we need, the housing is a crisis, crisis, you know, with a capital C. So we don't have parcels like this very many places, right? So, you know, at one point, one of our housing element maps or charts showed one hundred and ninety-eight very low-income units possibly on this site. And at the sixty-seven units, I think they're looking at the low-income unit level instead of the very, no, very low income. Yeah, the very low income is the biggest need. I don't know how that works with the projects. I know it's definitely a lot tougher. These projects only work if they're a win-win, you know, they're trying to legislate government, developers and the community. We're trying to make everybody win where it's impossible, obviously. With fewer units, there's less impact on the neighbors. I mean, there's no question about that. And, you know, and, you know, we need the units. So it's, it's a real conundrum. But, but I do think that, you know, generally speaking, this project would be a plus for Campbell because of the number of units that we do get that are market, that are missing middle type units. We get some BMR. You know, there's got to be something done though for the traffic. I don't know what. There's got to be some improvements. It would seem to me, otherwise, you know, this is why people are going to be up in arms with the laws that are forcing the higher density. We are all being forced with the higher density and we're just trying to make the best as we can of it. And it's certainly not easy. And I do like the points that we mentioned about, you know, solar and bike parking. How about some EV parking spots? I mean, this, this is trying to create a community there. You can really do some pretty cool stuff. I thought the general design of the units was fine, nothing, you know, special. Pretty, pretty typical type stuff and it looked pretty, pretty good to me. And, yeah, you know, I know with the corporation yard, I think we were trying to hit a grand slam there and that, you know, the odds of that were pretty slim. It sure would have been nice. Still would be nice if we could do it, but, you know, it's the reality of the situation doesn't sound too good. So, yeah, I don't, you know, I'm conflicted. I think, I think we're going to wind up with a plus project for Campbell. There's going to be issues for the neighbors and for the community with traffic, possibly with parking. As much as we can create a community unit there, it's great. It's funny that we do this, you know, half a mile as the crow flies, but when you go on Google Maps, it's two miles to bike there. Two point two miles to drive to Winchester Light Vale from that site. So it's, you know, people are going to have to have cars who are going to be living there. And not too many people will be living there without cars. Or maybe, maybe life is changing. Maybe there's more than I would think. But anyway, I think there's a lot of pluses here. I know that the developer has been talking to us through all our meetings and all that he's saying is really not a surprise. We kind of knew that was kind of coming. I think we'll wind up with a decent project. I wish there was more BMR units. I wish there were very low-income units in addition to some low-income units and moderate income units. So, thank you very much.
Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to direct my comments to the mobile home residents. I don't know if you're aware, but a lot of our mandate comes from the state. The state gives us a RENA, which is Regional Housing Allocation, that Campbell has to meet. We don't meet that requirement, we don't meet that housing production. And this is not just permits, this is actual construction of the units. If we don't meet it, they will punish us. And one of the tools they have in their, at the disposal is to take away our right to give permits. They will take it away from us and they take it to Sacramento. Sacramento will issue permits and that's probably the last thing we want. So, so it's not like we just got up on there and say, hey, let's just build housing. We are mandated by the state and that's what we're trying to do. This site, seventeen acres, is by far the biggest site in Campbell, you know. That, you know, and so we've got a fair share of that allocation. And so it's not like everybody wants to cram units. It's just that we have to fit it somewhere in Campbell and this site got a large portion of it. Now, I myself am in favor of going higher so the footprint of the units can be smaller. You know, the economics, however, take shape, you know. If it doesn't pencil out for the owner and for the developer. If it doesn't pencil out for the owner and for the developer, they just won't build it, you know? And so um, so this is a very difficult decision, you know? I don't want any of the neighbors to be burdened, but at some point, you know, um, extra units have to be built to meet this allocation. And so um, I think the plan the developer has provided is fair plan. I'd like to see more units, you know, to be honest with you, just so we can meet our numbers and we don't have to have the state breathing down our necks. And so um, uh, and I can, and being in that line of business as an engineer, the plan is just preliminary, they just, you know, did something just to get it in and beat the deadline. You know, the final plan is gonna be definitely different, you know? However, the the unit count goes up or down, I don't know, but the final plan, you know, will be definitely different. The uh, issues you guys brought up with traffic, I think those are absolutely real and they need to be addressed. And I agree with my fellow commissioner, it, we shouldn't be analyzing just one intersection. Should be analyzing more to see what can be done to make McLean's more uh, more um, with less delays and more, you know, operating normally. But um, at the end of the day, we're gonna need the units, you know? And so other seniors can, would be able to purchase something in Campbell, you know? Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, the other commissioners have have hit on a number of points and and um, you know, I I on the plus side, um, you know, I actually looked at the three hundred and thirty four units and and I know it's lower than what we had been talking about for the last year and a half or so on this on this. But I I I I actually personally feel feel comfortable with it, with it being in that range myself. I I've never looked at that and thought, let's put uh, six or seven hundred units on it. So I I'm not terribly uncomfortable with it. And I, and I, of course, I I actually understand the issue with the Corporation Yard and I I I actually I'm disappointed to hear that there's not been a real discussions about the Corporation Yard uh, since it's been um, that idea has been around for quite some time during our discussions on the on on the um, housing element. So um, but I I certainly understand the developer's position on that. The um, the 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 fact that it's building reasonable uh, for uh, square footage, just for, without disrespect to the lady, due respect to the lady, you know, uh, from the whole, of a home unit. They, the average unit is gonna be seventeen hundred square feet. They're gonna be typically three bedroom square, three seventeen hundred square foot, three story, um, if they stay with this. So it it is a normal sized townhome. We're not, we were talking about uh, the ADUs, which is a accessory dwelling unit that they possibly could have a few of them in some of the units that could be three hundred and fifty square feet for an efficiency, for somebody to rent to a student or somebody or a single. But the the units themselves are actually reasonably sized, not oversized townhomes. So I I was pleased to see those numbers there. You know, we've we've looked at uh, not four thousand square foot developments. We've we've looked at some that are up in the three thousand square foot development uh, in in recent years, which I um, am not a big fan of, but so I I was glad to see the the numbers being uh, reasonable. I I'm glad to see the fact that we're gonna have uh, sixty seven or twenty percent low income. I think picking the lower income rather than the moderate income is um, uh, uh, I think you're averaging out to about sixty percent of that of the uh, median income uh, number. And I think that's that's, you know, we're we're, we have seen where people are coming in and saying, well, we wanna do the the higher number. And and uh, it's nice to see that you're you're willing to go to a lower number, so I'm I'm pleased with that. As far as the park, um, you know, it's a public park. The residents should be able to have uh, access to it. Uh, it's 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 city maintained, it's it's taxpayer covered. The fact that it's a quiet park is actually, from my point of view, not a good thing. That, I was over there today and there were like three people in the park, and I actually talked to a couple of them. So um, I believe the park should be used by the residents. I live over near downtown and I go to Campbell Park, and it's got a playground, a new playground, and people picnic. And we have John Morgan Park, we have about a half a dozen parks in the city, and they all get more use than this park, as far as I can tell. Even the little park on on Union. The park should be used, and the fact that we are putting residential units in there will make it more useful for what it's intended, which is as a public park. It's not a, it's 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 not a, uh, you know, a um, free, free space, empty space, um, green area. It's supposed to be uh, available to residents to use. And um, I like going to the park and seeing kids play on playground. So um, this is the only park that doesn't have a playground. So it uh, which made sense, I guess, when there's only a a bunch of corporations there. But it would it would make more sense if there's a playground in the future. So I'm hoping that the city and or the developer or both of them combined can think in terms of doing something to make sure that the park gets updated. As far as the um, I think the traffic thing is a big deal. Getting the egress and, you know, going, getting getting in and out. I I don't know what the Campbell Technology Park Parkway itself, which is right where the, right where the park is, where you enter the the where the where the uh, where the uh, these developments would be. It's clear that what whatever it is now, we should make sure that 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 uh, that road that uh, is um, where you'd have to cross to get to the park is gonna, should have um, traffic calming. Should it should be something where there's not a lot of traffic on that. I think that the big traffic issue is is McLean's. You know, there there's only one way to get out of there is, and that's to go down and get the McLean's and then you get, you get, you either go to Union or you go to Campbell. So um, uh, I don't know what what that's gonna look like. I I I I don't know if it's gonna be a problem. McLean's is not a pretty place, right? It's got, it's got all the industrial, uh, light industrial, and there's lots of, there's lots of uh, trucks and cars parked along there. And I I assume there's lots of things happening on McLean's because of the nature of of it being a a industrial area. So to me, we should be looking hard at that. In in terms of um, I I I I concur with a couple of other commissioners about the look and feel. I I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to get, this is a common look now. We have these over by in downtown near the trail uh, off of Railroad Avenue, where they're all in line and they're three story, and that's a real common design now. And I would like to see it be a little bit more asymmetrical. I would give up, I would uh, I would uh, agree to give up a few units if you put a little bit more green space in there and made them not look like, I'll quote somebody else, cell blocks. So uh, that's just my personal feel about that. I I'm not gonna be living there, but I think uh, uh, having more uh, a little more green space, a little bit more asymmetry uh, is a good thing. I I I hear, uh, I think the folks from the mobile community have some valid concerns. I think um, uh, we should try and help us weigh some of those concerns. Uh, you have private road going in, I don't think that's gonna change. The only issue is whether that would be used as a fire, fire access road to this development. And, cause there is a, there's a, you presently have a gate there uh, in in the back. And so that's what they're talking about, is whether or not that that's uh, gonna be necessary to use that as fire access, because the McLean's access is enough. But that's something that the city and the developer and the fire department have to um, uh, figure out. But otherwise, it's still it's still private roads, not like uh, people are going in and out of there from the development, as far as I would be my understanding. I would invite the folks from the mobile home community to um, uh, uh, learn more. I I would, I would volunteer myself to come over and talk to you about about what's been going on the last two years with, we've been working on uh, what's called the housing element, where Campbell is required to figure out a way to uh, have three thousand units get built in the next eight years. Because the state says we have to do that. We don't, we don't build the units, uh, but we're, we have to change our zoning. We have to uh, figure out parcels that could be accommodate three thousand units. That's the number, twenty nine seventy seven. And that's what we've been doing the last eighteen months, and this has been on the map for quite some time. Um, I understand that lots of people don't even know what, I didn't know what the housing element was before I s- I came to the commission. So I understand a lot of people don't know that this stuff is going on. But um, this is what's happening in California. And um, I I encourage you to educate yourself, or, you know, like I said, I'd be happy to come over and talk to you about it. So um, and and explain uh, what's been going on in the city and what's going on in the future city. I've been in Campbell for most of the last forty five years. I I get it, I'm a senior, I I get Campbell, uh, but we're part of the metropolitan area. We're we're not the rural community that maybe that was once before I ever showed up in the seventies. And we're actually one of the the lowest population increased cities in the area. Campbell has had one of the lowest, the only reason we even have as high a population in recent last twenty years is because we annexed a couple of areas and it boosted our population, a couple thousand people, uh, more than usual. So so we we are not a high growth city. If we build the three thousand in the next eight years, yeah, we're gonna jump in in population from forty three thousand to, you know, fifty three thousand. But that's what uh, the state's trying to accomplish. So um, uh, I I I hear concern, I hear your concerns about traffic. I I hear your concerns about the issues about sewers and electricity and all that kind of stuff. The 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 city uh, and 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 the utility companies deal with that and try to figure that out uh, when a new development comes in. So um, uh, I think um, uh, the um, overall, I think, you know, some version of this would be a good thing. And so um, I I hope that uh, we can do some of these other things to make the uh, the the park and the accessibility and the traffic uh, work better. And uh, we'll, this is only a preliminary session, there's a long way to go, so hopefully that'll all get sorted out.
The community that came um, and really expressed a lot of the concerns and um, and it sounds like from the um, the property owner and the community, there's gonna be some good dialogue back and forth about what really makes sense to do on the property. And this last comment I wanted to make is, you know, we have been spending a better part of the last two years basically looking at how do we fulfill the the numbers and the housing requirements as was mentioned? And, you know, so we looked really hard at, you know, where where should those additional units go? Of course, we don't build them, we just kind of make it okay for developers to build at those sites where it makes sense, based on input from the community and analysis by the planners. But, you know, I think what's great here is that this is not theoretical. We have somebody who does wanna come and who does wanna come and build three hundred units to help the issue with housing and housing inventory and the cost of living in the area. So I wanna say thank you to you two for making that not a theoretical discussion that we've all been working on here, but actually the implementation and execution of getting us towards those numbers with a good plan.
Thank you, my fellow commissioners, for all your thoughts, I'll share mine and I think we'll be done with this. So just, I'd like to note, this is uh, still a ways off Union, uh, which is all apartment buildings and townhomes, one of which I happen to live in. I do understand it's comparatively remote for the city, but that's a solvable problem. I also understand that we've had some years of low interest rates and easy money, and everyone was too cautious to do anything, including mostly city, and here we are. I understand the city has very little leverage to use here, I think that's by design. We tried to push the applicant into doing the land swap, which didn't make sense for them, and so here we are. It's a different kind of relationship than we're accustomed to. So thank you for being interested in a a more, uh, a less we tell you what to do kind of situation. I'll say this really indicates the need for a citywide bike and pedestrian plan. Uh, I would want to see some kind of bike pedestrian circulation plan so that people can easily bike or walk to and from the um, the complex, uh, perhaps with more points of entry and exit than you can get with cars. Generally, I I agree with my fellow commissioners that I don't think having more people within walking distance of the park will ruin it. Uh, I regularly walk to Stianovich Park, and it's way busier than Edith Mortley. Uh, that's a very small park just off Union. I definitely like Commissioner Shostky's idea of having some kind of common i- common uh, area for people to gather. It doesn't even have to be particularly big, it just has to be maybe set up like outdoor grills, some kind of play space, benches, something like that, definitely with shade. I second what Commissioner Field said, uh, there's, there's plenty of ways to regulate parking. Uh, we just can't mandate it anymore, so more broadly. To be frank about it, uh, being able to easily park for free wherever you want at the expense of everything else, it's it's just not a high priority in our planning, the the state has kind of mandated that. Um, I, for one, am more concerned about where my daughter will live when she moves out. It's up the gates for now, but you know, we plan now. Generally speaking, I don't think there's anything wrong with cookie cuttering a good looking design, uh, maybe different colored accents on each building or something. Like cookie cutters are how you make a lot of cookies, and we need to make a lot of cookies. And more broadly, I I wanna thank people for coming out. I I really hope that the folks living in the Seo de Palmas understand that it might be that existing neighbors, when that was built, felt nervous about you folks moving in. And I I think having new neighbors, which will be, they're not quite as close to me, but they will be my new neighbors as well. I think it'll be good to have more neighbors, and those are my thoughts. But that, sorry, public comment is over. I believe that finishes item four, so moving on. The next item is PLN twenty twenty three dash one hundred, the AB twenty ninety seven study session. We've uh, just give us a second to set up, Chair Larissa Lowman will be presenting on that.
Okay.
That was thorough. It'll be exciting with that. We'll we'll reconvene as soon as Commissioner Shostky returns. Okay, uh, let's uh, do a three minute recess. Thank you, Chair. So today's study session is to present on AB 2097, a bill signed into law in 2022 and it went into effect January 1st, 2023 of this year, which prohibits California cities from imposing a minimum parking requirement on a development in association with a development project if the project falls within a half-mile radius of a major transit stop. This requirement is applicable to any development, any development project irrespective of land use or zoning and includes all residential, commercial, and industrial projects with an exception for transient lodgings such as hotels, motels, inns, et cetera. The bill provides a definition for major transit stop as shown on the screen. If a station meets any of the following criteria, it is considered a major transit stop. As you can see, this includes rail or light rail stations. The city is currently served by the Green Line, which is a light rail station, has many stops associated, ferry terminals, which the city does not have, bus stops. And in order for a bus stop to be considered a major transit stop, it must have an intersection of two or more major bus routes traveling in opposite direction, each providing a service of 15-minute headways during peak hours. And this definition includes existing transit stops and proposed transit stops as included on all applicable transportation plans, so we do on the regional transportation plan. And so this was included as attachment A with tonight's agenda packet, based on the definition of major transit stop as provided staff use data provided by MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, to map the major transit stops within the city of Campbell and to create a half-mile buffer. The map seen here shows the resulted properties, which will be affected by AB 2097. As you can see, it's a good third of the city. For AB 2097, only parcels with 75% or more of their area are included within this AB 2097 boundary. And this half-mile buffer radius is measured in a straight line, as mentioned in the previous item. And the map, the boundary is mapped irrespective of roadways and pedestrian accessways. For implementation, AB 2097 affects the current parking and loading chapter as it now provides an exemption to development projects from providing that otherwise required minimum parking standard. This means that if a project falls within the AB 2097 buffer, it does not have to provide any parking stalls and will still be considered conforming to the zoning code. The city of Campbell will continue to enforce existing parking requirements as previously entitled. If a project site is within the AB 2097 boundary and wants to benefit from the parking exemption, it would have to apply for a modification to the existing entitlement to achieve this. Finally, a project within the AB 2097 boundary may propose parking, and if so, the project must comply with all applicable building and zoning code requirements, such as providing accessible parking stalls, electrical vehicle charging, and adequate drive aisles and parking stall dimensions, et cetera. So this concludes my presentation. I can now take questions at this time. Thank you for that presentation. Let's start on this side, for sure.
Yeah, I didn't, I, what was the EV, what was the EV parking requirement there, Larissa?
It's for the building code, so there was a new building code that was adopted in January 2023. I don't have the current requirements on me, but it is required and implemented in our building department.
So EV is required? EV parking is required for certain projects of a certain size?
Certain portions. Think of it as ADA, so if you put in 10 parking spaces, a certain portion has to be EV.
Yeah. And my only other question, and I know it came up last, but just to be clear, so that, that half-mile measurement as the crow flies, that's, that's in the law? There's not, that's not subject to interpretation or anything? Or is it? I'm never asking a question.
I, I do know of some of my colleagues that have interpreted it differently.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, there are some attorneys interpreting it as, as a walking path.
So it's not written clearly?
So not to create any division. So we discussed, we didn't reach out to MTCA bag, who pretty early was the regional planning authority in Gary, 2015. And early on, they gave technical guidance to the 101 cities in nine counties in the Bay Area, and they essentially produced this map, provided their technical advice, recommendation. But it's as though, I don't want to quote, take or pick any bird you want, but it's a straight line.
Is it clear in the law? Is it clearly stated in the law?
It is not clear in the statute, certainly. My, my opinion is that, 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 that the intent was as the crow flies or whatever bird of your choosing. It does not specify how it's measured in the statute.
So I think what you had early on, we reached out to MTCA bag and declared, for example, no one's going to cross Highway 17, of course, to lighten the station. They said they will start to develop a program that invests in cities and creating connections, i.e. bridges or other things that reduces barriers around transit stations. We're wait, we're waiting for that promise to come through on investing money into Campbell and other cities to do it. I would think that would be like the idea that we have to regulate parking in other ways, other than just enforcing, just mandating tons of it.
You, you can still regulate on-street parking, just not on-site parking.
The city could still establish neighborhood parking districts, if that's your question.
Make sure you turn on the mic when you talk. Sorry. Oh, don't apologize to me. Sorry. Are you done, Commissioner? Well, I, yeah, I just had a quick statement, but maybe we should save, well, we're just doing it. So I, just the one thought that came to my mind is, as we're doing all these projects and all these developers that don't have to put in parking are all putting in parking, less than they had to before because that was way too much, but it's getting, at some point, I think we're going to be at the point where projects are going to put in more parking because they'll, they'll be the one place that they do have parking and that's where you can park. So who knows how things will evolve, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was surprised that Camden and Bascom, that's pretty major intersection that, you know, and it has bus traffic on all four corners, bus stop on all four corners. I'm surprised that wasn't done because Bascom and Surrey seems to be, do you happen to know what bus lines those are? Like, I believe 61 runs up Bascom?
Yes, I have a map here if you'd also like to take a look. Here's a map of the bus routes within the city of Campbell.
Okay.
This is maybe not that easy to see, but we have 61 and 26, which runs right here, which is providing those major stops. So it's the intersection of the two lines traveling in opposite directions. So the 61 and the 26 are considered to be traveling in opposite directions, even though they are sharing a route for a short portion during Bascom. But those stops along Bascom Avenue would be within, follow them that definition of sort of difference.
What about 61 and 37?
The ones in blue have, aren't frequent bus lines? The ones in red are every 15 minutes?
The ones in the red are every 15 minutes?
Right. So all these, all these radiuses aren't applicable to 15 minutes?
Either they weren't applicable or the intersection of the lines, the bus stops, were not within a 150 feet of each other, which is a small radius.
So the red is what?
I would have to check the terminology of the map, but if, it seems a shared book binder, and that seems to be what was previously written, was that there was 15-minute headways, although this publication was during, was released during COVID. So I know that some of the routes have changed since this time, but this does show all the routes as listed. The data that was provided to create this map, which we see here, was provided in 2021 and confirmed in 2022. So this is considered a post-COVID map, which was reflecting all of the new intervals for the bus stations.
Well, those are just a different, that's just a different lines, colors.
Do we, do we, so, so how do we check to see if, for example, Bascom and Camden was, you know, was missed or, or they already checked it and it's not, it doesn't miss? The 15, the half-mile radius was covered part of Camden.
Yeah, but it's a moot point because the other, all that part of Campbell's covered anyway.
No, there are, see the.
No, no, look, all that part of Campbell's covered. If you drew a, a, a half-mile radius of Camden and Bascom.
Yes.
It would, it would, it would cover some of Campbell, but it's already, it's already covered, that area.
It's not. To the right of Highway 17, there are Bascom, there are Camp, Campbell residences that.
Oh, I see, I see.
Right, yeah.
So, so, so three points. So on the light rail, assuming it's pretty easy, those are fixed lines. Keep in mind, we do have, they require you to plan for future light rail stations. Two of those light rail stops are not there, perspective of not be built in the next 20 years, but they are included. On the bus stations, that's a delicious point, it, it stops have to be different, going in different directions, the bus lines. And you have to be 150 feet within each other, so that's something Commissioner Camp are, or there might be a further distance between one stop and the other. Presumption is you get off on one bus, you walk away, get on the other bus. Last point also, and we got this information from MTCA bag that's worked with the transit agency to give it to us. Now, last point, this is a point in time where it was frozen, these were the bus lines. I've had, I've asked our VTA provider about 12 times now, what happens when the, the headways change? So with buses, it's a rolling target. These are fixed maps where someone comes in and builds a project for 20 years. We haven't gotten a concrete answer on that. My presumption is they would think that the headways, as we grow more, would, would be shorter.
Would be shorter. Yeah.
That, that has been announced.
Is it possible to ask regarding that specific intersection?
You can follow up.
Yeah. Just, just, just to give us the reason that they did not think it qualifies, you know, because I'd like to know.
So the intersection of the 60 bus down Winchester and the 26 across Campbell, those are, that's a 15-minute intersection in both directions, but I'm guessing this doesn't count because the, on the, on the map, the, the stops are about 200 feet apart, they're closest.
I'm sorry, which stops in particular?
At Campbell and Winchester, the 26th and the 60th.
The reason why it's not being shown on the map is because it's not within the 150 feet, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it's 200 feet between them.
That is correct. That one was not within the 150 distance of each other.
Gotcha. That's so specific.
Yeah, it was just very narrowly outside.
Yes, 46 feet.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, just put this on Google Maps. All right. Okay, and, and just your notes on the, on the presentation said existing light rail stations, but it's existing or proposed?
Existing or proposed.
Okay. Okay, this is, will this be posted on the city's website?
Or? Yes.
Available as a GIS layer?
It would be added as a GIS, it's currently being worked on to be added as a GIS layer, and then we are also internally working on a handout to post to our website as well, which would be cool.
Excellent. And this is canonical, like this is what the city, you say, do I need to provide parking? Look at this map, and that is, do I need to provide parking? Yes or no?
Correct.
Very cool that we have this.
Yes, and as, I think Director Bell, the director, mentioned, as headways change, the map will also be updated as we receive updated data from MTC. Like I said, the data initially was compiled in 2021 and then was updated in 2022, so it's expected they will continue to update the data regularly, and as they do, we will continue to update our.
Okay. Do they, do they also have any other questions? I, I figure this, this is very cool that, that we have this, I don't have any other questions about it.
I have more of a statement, which is that I've seen us attract public comment over and over about people not understanding. about people not understanding this is a state law. So a suggestion is, now that this is formalized, can we like make it more prominent? Because like in this most recent one, it's just sort of like black text in line with everything else. And then 10 people get up and complain about parking. Could we more prominently in the agenda notes, red, blue, say, state law, parking is not permitted and like try and get in front of some of the public comment on this?
Sure. State of California, not the city of Campbell or.
Yeah, right. But it just seems like we get so many people coming in and that's why they're coming in, because I think they're just missing it in the subtext and it attracts so much commentary. I wonder if we couldn't just elevate it.
It's very nice the state to be the heavy here.
Well, you know, in this, in this, in this thing we talked about tonight, I mean, it's a bit of a moot point because if we make it clear to some people that, that the development is, it's 2.2 parking per, per unit. I mean, it's, there's going to be two parking places for every unit, plus some additional parking for visitors or whatever. So it's, they're, they're putting in their parking because they know that, that people aren't going to buy a townhome there without parking. So it's like, it's, it's a moot point. And in, in the past, we would have gotten two and a half or three or whatever, you know? But, but we're still getting 700 and some parking spaces because that's going to be required. You know, people are going to need a place to park to car.
Maybe someday they'll transform those.
Electric bikes. That's the, that's.
So any other notes or questions on this? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Back to Commissioner Ostrowski's question, the word radius doesn't seem to appear anywhere in the statute.
Oh, well, that is a difference.
It's implicit, I guess, like within a certain.
So definitely more open to interpretation in that case. Because clearly we're drawing lots of bubbles with radio and, and referring to that.
And then what if my crow doesn't fly straight out?
Okay, I guess we can finish up with that. We move on to miscellaneous. So is there anything from the community development director?
I'll just give a quick word, that's all right. You're moving into latter parts of the evening. I do have some good news. So Keith envisioned a precise plan of the general plan was the Hamilton Avenue precise plan. We applied to MTCA Bag for a grant to underwrite that effort and have to report the staff list on that. Last week, they're recommending the MTC give us full funding on that. So that would be $400,000 with no local city match. It's the Hamilton Avenue precise plan that was identified in the general plan. This includes all the new housing sites, like the prize site, Staples, Elephant Bar, the Hamilton Avenue Light Rail Station, a bunch of our parcels. Thought was a lot of development going on around there. And we have a problem statement of about 1,500 housing units on one side of the freeway, a light rail station on the other side of the freeway. And it's very difficult, awkward to cross that freeway. Sort of looking at all that together and do better design to integrate redevelopment and transit.
I mean, Hamilton's already elevated, we get a cool bridge.
Yeah.
I know it's expensive.
Usually if, if we're awarded, take one or two months to execute grant agreements. Hopefully it'll start in summer, fall.
Okay, sorry, did you have anything else?
I think all I add is the council's little budget. We had a council meeting last week on budget. I'll say my observation is it's going very smooth. Most of the requests from community development have, are, seem to be going through. And one thing I talked about with Chair Buckbinder, at the next council meeting, the council's projected to adopt the budget. In the budget, our strategies, work plans, and our first funding to get there. In talking with Adam, there was a thought of bringing the adopted work plan out of the budget for community development to the planning commission, walking through what's on the work plan. And then walking through, are there, two things. One is understand what the touchpoints might be for the commission to be involved. And two, if there are opportunities, it's the discretion of the chair and the commission where you'd like to engage either with the ad hoc subcommittee or something else to support these efforts, you might think.
Thank you. Just as a note, like this is what I wanted to bring back around. I think we should probably wait until the next meeting when we know what community development is doing. But the idea of, for example, surveying our past conditional use, use permits and saying, okay, what are uses that have always been approved? And do we need, can we make them by right? And then proposing a zoning code amendment in that, in that way. Like, that would be something that a subcommittee, which I am guessing you'd be volunteering for, would do. But I think we should wait until next meeting to try and build that out.
I've got a budget question. By me. Do we have a budget for planning commissioner training? Or, or attending, you know, some of these train sessions? Because back in the old days, my first stint through planning, the whole commission could go rather than two of you, one of you.
Well, I'll, I'll say it again, we have monies each year that are fused. So that hasn't been an issue. We have enough monies. Two opportunities. New commissioners are actually required to attend the Plan Commissioner Lead California Cities Training. And I know during COVID, there was sort of a pause, but when that comes back up, I'd advertise any commissioner who hasn't done it to attend that training. Number one. Number two, you're all invited to Beautiful Fresno. September of August this year, there is American Planning Association Conference, and there is budget for any commissioner who would like to go.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn to the next meeting of the Plan Commission, which will be on June 27th, if I can still count, 2023. Good night.